Call the meeting to order, this is the county council meeting of Monday, April 6th, 2015. Roll call.
Alderman Kerkowski is excused for late arrival. Alderman Bukovic?
Here.
Ritz?
Here.
Toman?
Here.
Gale?
Here.
Guzakowski?
Here. Pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts.
Item 3 is approval of minutes of March 17th, March 30th. Need a motion?
Bukovic will make a motion to approve the minutes of March 17th and March 30th as listed.
Ritz will second. Roll call.
Alderman Bukovic?
Aye.
Ritz?
Aye.
Toman?
Uh, I have to abstain on the 17th, it wasn't here, but aye on the, I don't know if you want to split them, whatever, aye.
Alderman Gale?
Aye.
Guzakowski?
Aye.
Any thoughts on that, Larry?
I think, I think we can indicate that as to the minutes of the 17th that Mr. Toman abstained.
Alright. Item 4 is a recognition, actually it's for Barb Daly, our account clerk 2, who resigned April 3rd, after 15 years, 3 months, I'll actually read it, it's not that long, Barb was fantastic employee for all the time that she's here, did great work, did a lot of different jobs when she was here, and is leaving on her own accord, and I think she's going to enjoy her retirement. So, the resolution reads, whereas Barb Daly was hired full-time as an account clerk 2 for the treasurer's office for the City of Oak Creek on November 15th, 1999, and was appointed as a full-time account clerk 2 for the City of Oak Creek on January 1st, 2006, and was transferred as an account clerk 2 from the treasurer's department to the clerk's finance department on February 13th, 2008, and whereas Barb Daly, account clerk 2, is resigning effective April 3rd, 2015, after 15 years, 3 months, and 3 days of dedicated service to the City of Oak Creek, and whereas over her 15 years, 3 months, and 3 days of service, Barb Daly has witnessed and participated in the growth of the City of Oak Creek, and whereas Barb Daly has witnessed and participated in many changes in the treasurer's office and finance department, whereas Barb Daly has successfully reviewed, completed, and processed an estimated 148 accounts payable runs, endless time card entries for payroll, and too many journal entries to count for the City of Oak Creek, whereas Barb Daly has carried out her duties as an account clerk 2 in a professional and courteous manner, and has always worked with the city department heads, employees, and the public in a warm, friendly, and helpful manner, and whereas Barb Daly has been an outstanding representative of the City of Oak Creek, and whereas Barb Daly will be truly missed by all with whom she has contact over the last 15 years, 3 months, and 3 days, and the City of Oak Creek has benefited tremendously from Barb's tireless dedication and many contributions, having devoted countless hours to the city each year. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and the common council for the City of Oak Creek for and on behalf of the citizens of the City of Oak Creek that sincere appreciation and gratitude be extended to Barb Daly for her many years of dedicated and faithful service to the City of Oak Creek, and that the best wishes for good health and happiness be extended to Barb Daly and her family on her early retirement. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread upon the minutes of this meeting, and that the city clerk is hereby directed to transmit a suitable copy thereof to Barb Daly, passed and adopted this 6th day of April, 2015. Just need a motion.
Gale will move to approve resolution number 11606-040615, appreciation to Barb Daly, account clerk 2.
Guzakowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Ritz?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Bukovic?
Aye.
Alright, we're going to skip the public hearing because we have to wait until 7:00
PM as posted, so we'll shuffle down to item 7, which is a resolution number 11607-04, or 040615, it authorizes Mayor Scafidi to send a letter opposing elimination of personal property taxes to local state legislators and leadership. Jerry, you want to take that one?
As has been reported by the League of Wisconsin Municipalities, it's included in your packets as well, some of the legislators at the state level are looking-
Jerry, can you put your mic a little?
Is that better?
Yep.
Okay, some of the late state legislators are looking to draft language in, to amend some revenue issues that the city's dealing with now, one of those would be to eliminate the computer tax that we have reported in your packets that potentially has $159,000 impact on us. Right now, the state makes up for computers as personal property, they send us a computer aid payment every year, little over $100,000 in the general fund, and about $59,000 into our various TIF districts, so if they eliminated that, it's about $160,000 revenue loss to the city. They're also talking about the personal property tax and eliminating the personal property tax on businesses, that could do one of two things, the city could make the choice of not replacing that revenue, that's almost $620,000 right now, by my estimation, that's for public safety employees or somewhere, you know, 7 to 10 general fund employees if we were to do that, or they could transfer that tax to residences from commercial businesses. So it would have an impact of increasing the property taxes to residents and providing some tax relief to businesses. We don't think either of those alternatives are really very good, having a tax shift from business to residences or to forego the dollars. So, you've got some background information from, from the league, you've got some comments from the Wisconsin Realtors Association that basically takes the same position that I've just indicated, if the state could find a way to make up these revenues from some other source, I think there's general support that personal property tax is, is a hardship for many businesses, I think most people would, would agree with that, but the loss of those dollars in, in not replacing is really what the problem is. So, I've got a copy of the legislation in your packets, we've got a draft letter that would go if the council chooses to, to the state legislative leadership as well as to our local legislators and put our, our position in front of them. We've also got a resolution for you that's consistent with resolution in a format that the, the league has, has suggested to municipalities.
And I think the city administrator hits it right in the head, we're not opposed to trying to change some of the, the language and how the legislature relates to the cities, but if they take away money with a frozen tax levy, it has to be replaced, at least in some sort of a plan to transition away from it, not just a hard, you know, we're going to shut it down, because we don't have the flexibility in our budgets to do that. Questions from the council? Seeing none, motion?
Sorry, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Yeah, just for the audience and folks watching, the key here is, you know, this, this is going to happen, if it's going to happen, it's going to happen fast this year. So we, we need to be in front of this with our legislators and folks in the audience that have the ability and the will to do that, should contact the local assembly leaders or assembly representatives as well, that this is going to have direct impact without some kind of replacement funding from the state. This is money that will be transferred either to home, home payers, home property taxes, or elimination of positions within the city government, and we are already running very lean from a position standpoint, so this has some significant impacts on our operations, and we need to be very proactive in making sure if this actually does move forward, that there is some replacement funding provided by the state, otherwise there will be significant impacts, so. Jerry?
The other point that I would make, that I think the legislature has, has made some actions that have really created local governing bodies like the council to make the tough decisions, where they're getting some of the credit, if you will, from the state in terms of keeping the taxes out there, I think the letter that we have really says to our local legislative direction, we're going to hold you accountable for the impacts that this has, because that's really where this is being done. I think that's kind of a, an important part of this is saying, this is happening at the state level that causes very tough decisions to be made at the local level, and, and, and they need to be held and, and understand that, the, the public needs to understand where these actions are coming from.
Alderman Ritz?
As a businessperson, I see this as a, a good move by the state, actually, however, the speed at which they're trying to do it, and with very little collaboration with the municipalities, is a big mistake, in my opinion, so.
Thanks, anything else on that before we take, get a motion?
I had one other thing.
Go ahead.
I think Jerry can point out too, in the, in the back of the, the actual resolution we're about to pass, it states, I think that in terms of people can get a feel for what this potentially means, so their, their bottom line when it comes to December tax bills on a $200,000 home, if in fact the $618,000 was shifted to residential taxpayers versus the business taxpayers, it's $174 extra on their city tax bill per year. So, you know, we're looking at an auditorium referendum right now, that's, you know, a fraction of that, and this is going to be even more meaningful if in fact something, some remedy is not found to replace the money.
Alright, any other discussion? Motion on 7.
Gale will move to approve resolution number 11607-040615 authorizing Mayor Scafidi to send a letter opposing elimination of personal property taxes to local state legislators and leadership.
Guzakowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Toman?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Guzakowski?
Aye.
Bukovic?
Aye.
Ritz?
Aye.
Item 8 is a consideration of resolution number 11605-040615, it improves an intergovernmental agreement for purchase of new election equipment between Milwaukee County and the City of Oak Creek documenting cost sharing pertaining to the purchase of standardized election equipment. Yes, Jerry?
Sure.
Okay.
So for probably a year and a half, the municipalities within Milwaukee County have been working on a shared MOU with Milwaukee County on a joint purchase of election equipment. It took quite some time, and they're ready to prepare a contract with the vendor for the new equipment. Essentially, the county has agreed to make an initial investment in the purchase of new election equipment, paying 70% of the cost, with the city reimbursing the county of course 30%. What I prepared for you here in an analysis is what we currently pay for election equipment, maintenance agreement is somewhat apples to apples, but essentially, the new equipment gives us a capability of reducing our equipment from two machines at each district down to one, so there would be one piece of election equipment that would need to be maintained rather than two, and then we would have the accessible equipment as well. Seeing that our accessibility equipment is extremely outdated, the county would be paying for that 100%. The real benefit in looking long-term, and looking at the big picture on why this is an exceptionally good deal for the City of Oak Creek, is that in the year 2020, with the census coming out, we would be by state statute mandated to vote by wards instead of by district, so currently we vote for six, in six different districts, we would be going to 19. Our machines that we currently use are unable to do those calculations, so we'd have to purchase all that new equipment. So these new machines will allow us to vote within those wards, if there's three wards or four wards at that district, it's capable of doing that calculation. So you, I don't know if you have any questions on the analysis, but the bottom line is, for the total cost for the new equipment at $21,000, I was able to secure a grant for $6,000, and then we're also getting a trade-in on some of our very old equipment, which the total cost brings it down to $14,000, and we'll be financing $12,000 to be paid in three increments over the next three years to the county. They're paying close to $46,000. The county will be paying $46,000.
Okay. City administrator?
I, I think the, the thing to note here, that Catherine has in the background, is the cost of these pieces of equipment are $60,000, of which the county's paying 70%. And so we're only paying 30% of that, she's been able to get a grant for some, as well as defer the payment of those for three years, and we would have had to buy all new equipment in 2020 anyway. So this, from our standpoint, is a pretty good deal, we'll have to put this in our capital budgets for the next couple of years, but it's a relatively modest cost, so I think that this is truly one of those things that intergovernmental cooperation, I think all 19 communities are cooperating with county, and I believe the ci, the city of Milwaukee is programming the machines and doing some, some maintenance work that they're better served to do. So I think everybody makes out pretty well in this kind of cooperative arrangement, and certainly we have, based on a need to make changes in 2020 anyway, so I think this is a, a good intergovernmental cooperative arrangement.
And it is important to note that agreement with the county to do the programming, currently we use an outside vendor to do that programming, an extremely high cost, because we really don't have an option. With this new contract, the City of Milwaukee will be putting forth an agreement with each one of our communities to do the programming for us at a fraction of the costs that we're paying now, so we don't know exactly what that cost will be, if I were to put that in my analysis as well, it would probably be overwhelming in our favor, and so that agreement will be forthcoming with the City of Milwaukee.
Mr. Dugner?
Arden Dugner, 8540 South Pennsylvania, as a former chief election inspector, I am very wary about these new computerized systems. All it takes is another virus, and who then is able to check? The present system, oh, it's so expensive, and it takes so much effort to have paper ballots, but you can check them when there's a recount. I am just wary of any of these complete computer systems, especially in the state of Oregon, where you don't even have to get out of your domain to, to vote. What is the plan for the new system? How will it operate?
Can I explain?
Sure.
So there still will be paper ballots, Arden, the accessibility machines as they are today, we are actually kind of going more paper, the accessibility machines, you can touchscreen and vote, and your vote is tallied in that machine on a tape total. With these new machines, it's wonderful, because when you vote on the touchscreen on those accessible equipment, it prints out your ballot, and then it's fed into the machine. We actually get a tangible ballot from that machine now. The other machines, the ones that everybody sort of uses right now, that we will be moving to, aren't connected to a network or any type of internet system.
Now I know what that was, the biggest, biggest, it was always a difficulty, but it always has been a difficulty to try to keep these things honest from, you know, there's millions of dollars being spent on elections, and if you can find a virus, a hacker, that's what bothers me, and it cannot be determined after the fact, after you send, now, are we, are we eliminating the paper ballots completely now?
Not at all.
Oh, is that right?
It would be exactly how you vote today.
In other words, you still have a paper ballot and a touchscreen available, is both of them, is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir, and the, and the machine for not being connected to the internet, it doesn't allow anyone to come into that machine and put a virus or anything like that on it, because it's independent, just like ours are today, so there'd be no changes there. There wouldn't be the ability for somebody to come in and put in a program that would corrupt it, it wouldn't be possible.
I, I thought that this would be like the police system, where everything is broadcast on, Waukesha had that problem too, and I'm just wondering what the latest scoop is on Milwaukee County election equipment, that, that, oh, you don't have to take them out and check them out, oh, no, it's so, it's so time-consuming to have it, have the local community check the ballots when we can do it automatically.
Sounds like we got it covered, Arden, so.
How's that?
It sounds like we got it covered with the paper ballots, so we should be good.
Good, now how is that transmitted now to the county?
How is that transmitted to the county?
Currently, the way that we do it, and we will continue to do this, is once we have all of our districts closed at the end of the night, we report those numbers from-
Oh, you still, you still have control of it then, huh?
Do have control of it, and-
Oh, good, well, that, that, that settles my problems that, to try to keep this as honest as possible, and-
Alright.
And if you have further questions, Arden, come in and talk to me, I'd be happy to talk to you about it.
Thank you, Mr. Dugner. Alderman Ritz?
Uh, I'm done.
Alright, any other questions? Motion?
Gale will move to approve resolution number 11605-040615 approving an intergovernmental agreement for purchase of new election equipment between Milwaukee County and the City of Oak Creek documenting cost sharing pertaining to the purchase of standardized election equipment.
Guzakowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gale?
Aye.
Guzakowski?
Aye.
Bukovic?
Aye.
Ritz?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Alright, is nine less than a five-minute discussion, you think?
Yes.
Okay, number nine is a motion to purchase a next-generation NG 911 phone system, six dispatch stations from AT&amp;T Global Services Inc. in the amount of $173,333.64.
This is a budgeted capital expense in the 2015 budget, we've got $200,000 budgeted for this, bids came in with a favorable quote, we have currently four stations, ideally we would like to have six stations, so our recommendation is to purchase the six-station NG 911 phone system, which is an upgrade from analog to digital, which is required under both state and federal regulations for $173,333.64. It also indicates that this purchase is a 75-25 split under our contract with St. Francis in terms of the capital equipment, because they would have needed to make that purchase. So this is a, a favorable bid that came in here, Caesar, I saw him walk in if he wants to make any comments, we also had some quotes in here for five-year operating costs in terms of the software maintenance and things like that, we're not recommending that at this time, but we wanted to show you that in terms of what some of the options are, and there will be annual maintenance for the software as there are for all of these systems out here, but a, a good bid that came in, the six dispatch stations is, is what's needed now, four becomes a problem for us in terms of training and bringing some of our, our dispatchers in.
Chief, or captain, does this get us where we need to be?
Yes, right now it gets us where we need to be with six, with us dispatching for St. Francis, and also we're the backup center for Bayside, which is all of North Shore, should they go down, we need spots for them to come to, we have an agreement with them, MOU, and six is, right now, you come in there, we have five people, six on a regular basis with the training of the dispatchers that we have, so.
Okay.
Or we wouldn't be suspicious.
You have four now?
Yes.
Alderman Bukovic?
Chief Edwards, life expectancy of the system, five years, 10 years?
15 years is about what we're looking at.
Oh, 15, okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Alderman Toman?
Was the 25% cost share figured in previously, or is that?
No, no, that'll, that'll help us in our next purchase, that we don't have all of the dollars budgeted for, so, you know, it, it certainly will help.
Alright, thank you.
Anything else? Motion?
Gale will move to approve the purchase of a next-generation NG 911 phone system from AT&amp;T Global Services Inc. in the amount of $173,333.64.
Guzakowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzakowski?
Go ahead. You didn't mention six, I don't know if that needs to be in there.
Uh, it says six in the motion.
Okay, fair enough.
Okay.
Alderman Guzakowski?
Aye.
Bukovic?
Aye.
Ritz?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Alright, let's jump into 10, since it's police-related as well, police and fire. 10 is a motion to approve the recommendation of the police and fire departments authorizing the City of Oak Creek to enter into a 15-year intergovernmental agency agreement with Milwaukee County for a digital radio system. Chief?
Think back in, in the fall, I was here talking to you about the WISCOM system that we were possibly looking at to go to, and we were hoping to go to, we were given a grant by the state to a feasibility study, which I think we explained that Greenfield, who went to WISCOM, wished they would have done that before they went to that system. So the state paid for a grant for us for about $30,000, $40,000, and the study came back, and after seeing the study, there would be no way that I could come before you and say that that would be a fiscally responsible way to move, when they showed us a, in the study, that would, overall cost would be about $2.6 million. The grant money that we would receive from the state would be $640,000, and that would, we'd still have 200, or $2 million to deal with, that we'd have to come up with, we also found out some infrastructure issues with the system and some, with the system is being managed, they're having problems. So our option is the state, or, or the county, is going back to the county with an intergovernmental agreement, we're the last municipality that has signed on to that, every other municipality has signed on to that agreement, and as part of that, we would need new console equipment that would have to be bought and paid for, that would have been covered by the grant partially, but we'd had a lot more left, and that was not budgeted for, but the agreement itself, we're just asking that we can be allowed to enter into that agreement with the county that we explained and was in the packet that you all had, instead of going through the entire study, which is 160-some pages or-
I know we've talked previously, and we've been at ICC meetings where this has been talked about, concerns about the, the fee structures in the future?
They've reduced the fee structure, and actually, some of the issues that we had, they changed at the first of the year, the county exec created a new board, a new emergency management director, Christina Westrich, who I have a lot of faith in, we didn't have a lot of faith in what, how it was being run before, and she now oversees all the radio system, 911 EMS, and we've had a lot of meetings with her, and we feel confident on what she's doing there, and the fee structure was reduced, our first year's fees, $4,200 roughly for the fees that we do, they're increased exponentially every year, who I think after 15 years, it ends out at $39,000 is where the fee structure would be at.
So you think the county's played ball with us, considering that we came in late, that, you know, we're getting the best deal we can get?
Yes, they've actually, I think, all the meetings that we attended, ICC, some of the other meetings we had with the county, actually broke them down quite a bit as far as what they decided to do for the other cities and us, and by bringing WISCOM into play, they reduced their fee structure, trying to get on board and even closer to what WISCOM was doing, because they saw that others were looking to jump to that system, and it did help.
So at the end of the day, we end up with a better radio system, better radios, newer radios?
New radios, we have to change over, it's required by law, we have to change, we don't have a choice, we have to switch over to digital, it's a mandate by the federal government, the consoles have to be in, they have, the county has a date set for June of this year, they have to be in and switched over.
Okay.
And then we switched over, January 15 was the date for switch over for the county system, but they're not up and running yet, so that, as people come on board, that's how it's going to work, that you phase into it.
Okay, Alderman Ritz?
Refresh my memory, chief, the current radio system we have now is self, is ours?
No, we are on the county system.
We are on the county.
It's still the same system, never any problems with that system, we were just not happy with the governance and how it was being handled and the fee structure, so we were looking at WISCOM as a possibility, especially since we were looking at a grant.
Other questions?
I did, Steve.
You're good?
No, I had some questions.
Go ahead.
John, can you tell me on the, I don't recall this, I know, I know we've been buying radios for the past couple of years, there's an item on the fourth or fifth paragraph, the radio purchases not being considered as part of this report, that-
Yeah, those radio purchases are the CEP items that we've been, and we had a five-year plan for portables and mobiles, we have, this is our last year of it, we're purchasing those, five-year plan.
On the-
They're all compatible with this technology, they're dual-band.
In the actual contract, there's some weird stuff or funky stuff, on the usage fees, there, there is a provision there that if we come in after a January 1 timeframe, we could potentially be proactively rated on that, have we approached them about?
That was a specific item I had an issue with, Christina Westrich, the emergency management director, approached the governance board, and her feeling, she's trying to get that changed, she doesn't believe that's fair, you should not have to pay any fees until you come on board, however, she can't change it without the board, the county board changing that.
Well, it says the county reserves the right to exempt subscriber agencies from retroactive fees, I mean, it's in the-
And they haven't, and that was my, that was my sticking point, I had a-
So our start date is June 1st, John?
Pardon me?
What's our start date in this contract, June 1st?
The start date on the contract is January 1 of 2015.
Well, what's, what's our effective though, I mean, when we-
When we get on board, they still have the right to make it retroactive to January 1.
What are we looking though, I mean, effectively, what?
Well, 4,200 is the fees for the radios, but if you're talking about when we're going to start being, but once we get the consoles up and running, and we switch over to digital, I think 2017 is the actual mandate by the federal government, but I think once we're up and running, Steve, am I correct?
Why don't you jump on that one, Steve?
I think the question is, when will that be?
If we don't switch over, and waiting on April 9, they're going to give us a deadline date that we have to cut over for our consoles. Everything got pushed back a little bit. Once that date is in, that will tell us when we have to have our new consoles in. Otherwise, we're going to be operating on just our backup radios for the city, because we will no longer be hardline connected to their system.
What are we currently going to pay them, John, per year?
We're paying nothing.
Would we pay them, though?
We will pay them $4,200 this first year.
Oh, that's small money, then, okay.
And just so you know, what we've looked at also, Steve has taken a look at the radios that the city has, and we pared down the radios, because the fire department has a VHS system that we're going to keep. And the highway department, we're going to move them to VHF. So they're not part of the fee structure. We've reduced the fee structure by getting rid of some of the radios that we don't believe we need anymore. Health department, highway department, we're going to use a VHF system for them and use that VHF as a backup, since fire has that. We're going to keep that going for our own backup system.
And, you know, the mayor alluded to the fact that these escalating fees the longer later in the life of these contracts. What are we talking, actually, dollar amounts per year to the...
For the fee structure?
Yeah.
2015, we're looking at $41,28. 2016, $10,320. 2017, $18,576. 2018, $28,896. 2019, $35,088. 2020, $37,152. 2021, $39,216. And that's as high as they went, because if you... On the fee structure for the chart, that's as high as they went. They have the right to do a cost or a certain increase percentage-wise at that point. But one thing in the actual study that we looked at, that was done for WISCOM, the company that looked at it, they were very open and objective, and they said these fees seem reasonable as what they've seen across the country as well. So even though we've never paid fees before, and Waukesha County, they've paid fees since they've had their system. And this is the reality of us going on there.
One thing we had them do is we had them put them side by side for that 15 years. If we went to WISCOM and if we stayed on the county system, and if we ran them out for 15 years, what would that cost comparison be? And it's still, even with those accumulating over the 15 years, those fees for the county, that $2.6 million, we don't even come near it, that the startup fee would be or cost would be for the WISCOM.
There were, excuse me, a couple of other provisions where they could, I guess, almost make a capital call on municipalities for maintenance and upgrades of their equipment over time?
Well, they do have a capital improve... Part of our fees are... We're paying into a capital improvement fund, and that starts in 2018, and it's $2 per radio.
How many radios are we talking again?
Well, for police and fire, and this includes our dispatch consoles, I'm approximating about 172 radios. So it could be a little bit more, could be a little bit less, but that's what I'm...
Two bucks a year per radio?
I'm sorry?
Is it two bucks?
No, that's just the capital improvement. At that year, the highest we're going to pay per radio year is $19 at the current structure, and that includes their fees and capital improvement. But then after 2022, they... There's a lot of asterisks there, meaning that they have... They can increase it at some point.
Done, Ken? Alderman Toman.
Chief, was it Greenfield that's on this system now?
Greenfield is on the system currently.
Are they having the same concerns and problems?
They're having a lot of problems with the WISCOM system, and there is a really good possibility they're going to the county system.
Okay.
I've heard the same thing.
Yes, it looks like they're going to be switching over.
I know we had talked about Greenfield in the past, and I was just wondering where...
And we got good advice from them, because they said, "We didn't do a study. You guys need to do that first."
All right, good.
It sounds like it's going to be a clean sweep, all the suburbs.
Okay.
And just so you know, Milwaukee is on their own system, but their end of life is coming up within, I want to say, about five years. And they're actually talking about speaking with the county, because they're going to be looking at a new system also at that time.
Captain Anderson, do you have something else?
No, one made difference with Greenfield than when we came in here last time is, as you saw in the study, they said we could not do this with one antenna site. And Greenfield was able to do it with one antenna site, but they're having a lot of problems. We needed, because of our city layout and the area we have to cover, we needed two full sites, which doubled the cost of everything with it, which is why we weren't expecting that. But the study helped us be able to prove that.
Chief Rosendich has something?
To help answer your question, Ken, on the fees, the actual... If you go back to last year when we bought portable radios, at that time, we were getting tremendous deals on portable radios. So in essence, we reduced our inventory of radios on the fireside by 20%. And by the price structure drop and by not having to do a CIP for this year, it was $100,000 swing, just in our portable radios on the fireside. So you're already, in essence, we're $100,000 ahead right there. But over the process, too, and I commend the whole group that did the study for the WISCOM, because we dotted our i's and crossed our t's, and I think it was very good to delve into this and learn, because we learned a lot about radio systems. And I'm glad I'm not a radio geek, because I lose a lot of sleep otherwise. But going forward, there may be... We're still looking, there's called re-flashing, which is some of the system of how the frequency ours, because there's like, I don't know, seven to 10 bands just on a portable radio that you have, plus 16 channels. So there's the base stations that may... Or the mobile radios that may still have to get replaced. I know for us, we're still looking at it. They're still investing into the companies to see which way we have to go with that. So that could be later down the road. But right now, I mean, we're dollars ahead.
All right, anything else? Alderman Kirkowski.
I thank you for allowing me to be tardy. I did do some reading on this, even though I walked into the middle of the conversation. So I just want to let you know that I feel confident in voting, even though I came in the middle of it.
We have no doubts.
Well, thank you.
All right, any other questions? Motion?
Gale, move to approve the recommendation the police and fire departments authorizing the City of Oak Creek to enter into a 15-year intergovernmental agency agreement with the Milwaukee County for a digital radio system.
Guzekowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Bukavich.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Thank you, chiefs, thank you, Captain. All right, so we're going to go to the official public hearing, which was posted for seven. We're a little tardy on that. So it's a public hearing, a request by the City of Oak Creek to rezone a portion of the property located at 9770 South 20th Street from I-1 Institutional, M-1 PUD Manufacturing Plan Unit Development. City Clerk, please read the public hearing notice.
Public hearing number one is to consider a request by the City of Oak Creek to rezone a portion of the property located at 9770 South 20th Street from I-1 Institutional to M-1 PUD Manufacturing Plan Unit Development. The applicant is City of Oak Creek. The property owner is Triwire 2 LLC. There follows the legal description. The date of the notice is February 26, 2015.
And it looks like Carrie's queuing up the mic.
Yes, good evening. My name is Carrie Papalbon. I'm the planner with the city, and I am here on behalf of Doug Seymour this evening. This is a hearing... The background on this is that the owners of 9770 South 20th Street purchased the former utility property from the City of Oak Creek in 2014 and combined those properties in May of 2014 via CSM. A rezone of the property was not completed at that time and is now sought to bring the same... Bring the property into the same zoning as the existing facility. The Plan Commission reviewed and recommended the approval on February 24, 2015. This is a public hearing on the aforementioned rezoning request. Anyone wishing to comment regarding the subject of this hearing should approach the podium and clearly state your name and address for the record before proceeding with comments. This public hearing is now open.
I'll make three calls for public comment on this item. First call?
Mayor Scapiti, Arden Degenir, 8540 South Pennsylvania Avenue. Correct me if I'm wrong, but if this has been changed, say, 15 years ago, I understand this... The property is now not used by the City of Oak Creek Water Utility, but by the Black Bear. Am I correct in that?
Go ahead, Carrie.
Yes, the water utility has... Has de... What's the word I'm looking for? They basically said that they're not using the well that's on that property any longer, and they have no use for that facility. So therefore, that's how the deal became where Black Bear ended up purchasing that property.
So what's happening to the well, then?
It's been... It's no longer in use.
Arden almost capped and abandoned.
Yeah.
Because it seems as though there's a slip here in assessment. If this is... Because I'm... As I understand, institutional property is not assessed for taxes.
That's correct.
So if that's the case, then we are looking at some assessment backwards. We are looking at some taxes that we haven't collected through the years. And to me, this is... This is an unfair use of tax money by the water utility, and I would request the city to examine...
Mr. Degenir.
Possible retroactive taxes, just like the state checks on every manufacturer, goes back 10 years and checks every one of their expenses to see if they're local or...
So Attorney Haskin?
Correct me if I'm wrong, I thought I heard that the utility owned this property until...
Until 2014.
Okay. So if the utility owns the property, the city owns the property, it's exempt from taxes. You can't go back. It only becomes taxable when it becomes privately owned. And it didn't become privately owned until 2014. So as of January 1 of 2015, it's back on the tax rolls. That's the way it works.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Degenir. Second call. Third and final call for public comment on item five, the consideration of the request on the rezone. I'll close the public hearing at this time, and we'll move to a discussion of the ordinance number 2762, rezone a portion of the property located at 9770 South 20th Street from I-1 Institutional, M-1 PUD Manufacturing Plan Unit Development in the 6th District. Any questions? Motion?
Guzekowski makes a motion to accept ordinance number 2762, rezone the portion of the property located at 9770 South 20th Street from I-1 Institutional to M-1 PUD Manufacturing Plan Unit Development, 6th District.
After the motion.
Gale, a second.
Okay, so Attorney?
No, after.
Oh, after? Okay, roll call.
Alderman Ritz.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
So Attorney Haskin?
If I could, Mayor, if I... We could revisit, I have number seven. The council action was to authorize the mayor to send the letter, but you alluded to this, Jerry, in your comments, but I just... The light bulb went on, I guess. There's a resolution that's on the back of the council report. And even though that resolution isn't identified on the agenda, it's the same... Oh, it is identified. But this... The resolution doesn't authorize the sending of a letter. The resolution is the common council's action to oppose the elimination of the personal property tax.
So it would be authorization to...
To adopt resolution.
Resolution and send the letter along with the resolution.
Yes, right.
That identifies the city's position.
So is there some remedy we need here? Just to... There should be a second motion to adopt resolution 11607-040615.
Okay.
So noted.
Actually, take action on, yeah.
Do we already have a vote on the other one?
We have a vote on the other one, so it's just a motion.
All right, so we just need a motion. Alderman Gale's made that motion. Is that correct?
I have.
Okay, we need a second.
Guzekowski. Toman, a second.
Toman, seconds, roll call.
Okay, Alderman Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
All right. Moving forward to item 11, vendor summary. Anything you want to highlight?
Large payment to our City Hall library contractor, so...
As would be expected.
Yeah, $2 million, so...
Yep. If no questions or comments, motion on 11.
Gale, move to approve the 2015 vendor summary report in the amount of $2,658,771.15.
Kirkowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Item 12 is a consideration of ordinance number 2761, approving a conditional use permit for the property at 150 West Town Square Way for a restaurant with drive-through facility, incorporating conditions and restrictions in the 2nd District. Jerry? Or Carrie?
So at the March 27, 2015... I think it should be actually... Actually, at the March 17 hearing, the council reviewed and approved ordinance 2759, which allowed for a conditional use permit for a restaurant with drive-through facility. As part of that, ordinance, council directed the Plan Commission As part of that ordinance, council directed the Plan Commission to prepare and approve conditions and restrictions. They have done so, and are, they are included in your packet. They did that at the March 24 meeting. I just wanted to declare, add that there are two clarifications that were added to those conditions and restrictions following the discussion at the Plan Commission meeting. Those are on page 6, section 8, sub O, and there's an error in numbering here, so it would be P, sub F. Those are just clarifying that the Plan Commission has the authority to, to change certain things that's allowed by code. It basically just says what the Plan Commission is authorized to do in terms of modifying standards of site plan approval for landscaping.
Is it specific to landscaping?
O is specific to, O is specific to landscaping, and... It's essentially just incorporating certain language that's in the code and in the PUD that allows three-quarter majority of the commissioners to modify the site plan.
Okay.
As required.
Why are we inserting that?
It's just clarifying that, at the site plan review, if the Plan Commission determines that some, certain standards should be modified from what the code requires, the conditions and restrictions are not holding them to something that is different, it's clarifying the, it's basically saying that the Plan Commission has an authorization, it's just stating it in here.
But again, they just make a recommendation. Do we, would the council have any...
The site plan review.
Okay.
For site plan review. This is basically saying that, if there's a three-quarter majority approval of a modification, that's still valid, it's not going to hold them to a condition in the conditions and restrictions that says otherwise.
Got it. Alderman Kerkowski?
I think my question got explained, but is this paragraph in other documents of similar nature, or is this just special to the, to this one here?
No. What this is, that language that's highlighted on that page is directly from code and from the Drexel Town Square PUD.
Okay, if Panda Express had one of these, would they have the similar paragraph in this?
It was not caught before, so this is basically just clarifying what the code allows, but it's, I understand what your question is, it just wasn't caught prior to this application. Yes, and it will be a standard moving forward that we include it in conditions and restrictions, just clarifying that authorization.
All right, I'm going to City Attorney Haskin, then then Alderman.
Well, just, just one point here, under sub P, which is Building Design Guidelines and Architectural Standards, it reads, as part of the detailed review, the Plan Commission, with the written consent of the property owner, may make site-specific modifications to the architectural standards by a three-fourth majority vote of the Plan Commission. So the property owner's got to prove it.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Alderman Ritz?
I think this was just, in part, the issue of the headlights, and being able to make sure that you didn't have a problem where the drive-through would cause a problem with, with, on the roads themselves, flashing in, so...
Yes, and part of the, part of the issue going forward is that the landscaping plan has to conform to not only what the Plan Unit Development requires, what the code requires, but also with the unique easement locations that are on the properties. So if this did not have that authorizing language in there, one could say that they would be required to be held to a landscaping standard, that wouldn't actually make sense.
That's, that's actually the key point.
Yeah.
It actually gives some flexibility, so what, the end product is actually something that actually looks better and enhances what we're doing out there.
And is actually allowed, because there are some easement restrictions that wouldn't be recognized otherwise.
Okay. Everybody clear on that? Motion?
Bukavitch will make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2761, approving a conditional use permit for the property located at 150 West Town Square Way for a restaurant with a drive-through facility, incorporating conditions and restrictions. Kerkowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kerkowski?
Aye.
Bukavitch?
Aye.
Ritz?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Kuzikowski?
Aye.
All right, item 13 is consideration of Resolution number 11604-040615. It authorizes the dissolution of tax incremental financing district number nine in the 1st District. City Administrator?
This continues city's efforts to successfully close out tax increment districts when they've met their original intents, or if that original intent has changed. This district was created in 2009, and had been thought to have some opportunities to clean up some properties in the area. There was also some pretty significant tax increment that was estimated to be generated in this area, that proved to change over time. There was a movement of a major company from 13th Street over to Ryan Road. Figured out which property that is? That would be the Edgerton Contractors out there. So there was a real big loss in terms of the increment that was created there. But anyway, there's about $28,000 a year, that's generated $29,000 in this district. It's got a fund balance of $200,000, which would be returned to the various taxing districts. As a staff, we're recommending that we close this district nine out, that we can't see a project in the foreseeable future that the district would have, so we're recommending that it be closed. We have to go through an audit under the State of Processes to make sure that we close it out properly, and then we would return any fund balance to all the very taxing districts, which would include us. And then moving forward, we would be able to take about half, or not about, we would be able to take half of the increment that the city would normally have gotten from this, which will be able to be on the tax roll for additional revenue into the general fund. And then the other half would be property tax relief to the overall residents of the city. So I think this continues the fiscally responsible actions the city's taken over the years in creating districts, and when we can, close them out at the earliest possible date. So nine would be closed, we expect that the next district after this would be four. We expect that's going to be in 16 or 17. That's got considerably larger numbers involved with it, it's about half a million dollars a year there. So right now, that would leave seven districts open, and again, we'd be looking to close four in either 16 or 17.
Questions?
What was the original closing date of this?
23 years from 2009, so that would have been 2000, well, I'm foggy on the map, I was driving late last night.
32.
So, a lot of years from now. And again, there was originally a fairly large increment that was being generated here. We thought that there was a property that we might be able to clean up, that hasn't turned out to be the case. And Larry, I don't know if you have any more background?
No, I think, I think that's accurate.
All right. Motion?
Kerkowski will make a motion to adopt Resolution number 11604-040615, authorizing the dissolution of tax incremental financing district number nine. Bukavitch will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Bukavitch?
Aye.
Ritz?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Kuzikowski?
Aye.
Kerkowski?
Aye.
Licensing, 14.
The licensing committee did not meet prior to tonight's meeting. Ritz will make a motion to grant operators license to the considerable number of people listed below, all having received favorable background reports.
Gail will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Ritz?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Kuzikowski?
Aye.
Kerkowski?
Aye.
Bukavitch?
Aye.
15.
Ritz will make a motion to grant a change of agent to the noodle shop company, Colorado Inc., from Car, Car, Kerry Azoban, Azobane, to Grant G. Elhart, 4764 North 54th Street, Milwaukee.
Gail will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Toman?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Kuzikowski?
Aye.
Kerkowski?
Aye.
Bukavitch?
Aye.
Ritz?
Aye.
16.
And finally, Ritz will make a motion to grant a transient merchant license to TruGreen, N-8W-224, 22550, Johnson Drive, Waukesha, Wisconsin, and the following salesperson, having received a favorable background report persons.
Gail will second.
Roll call.